Yeah.
We have editing software, I don't know what to cut it. I run it issue.
Did anybody else owe this at five thirty?
Jared said Matt.
Yep, whatever.
I hear ya.
Twenty dollars ticket floating around my desk somewhere. You gotta pay for that.
That one. Did we, did we get everything with Quinn?
Yeah.
Someone figured out? That's Brad, yeah.
He came in the next day.
He got that paid, yeah, I think they're the... Did you talk to Quinn today, or did you find anybody?
Yes, I did.
You are the man. Thank you. Who's coming in?
Not sure yet.
I thought you said you've got somebody.
No, I talked to someone, talked to them. This guy's, he's getting, he's trying to get his guy there and whatever we can find.
Who's that?
Todd.
Troy Thompson.
Troy Thom- Johnson?
Johnson.
Ah, it's Ray Valley.
Oh, his guy then?
That's his.
So you just thought, what the heck, we'll just use his guy?
Well, instead of by sweet talking, I would probably give him some money.
Well, sweet talking then, just get it done, just take care of it. And then when he finds out that the new meter reads the same, he's just gonna have to figure it out on his own then, because then we are covered.
Yep.
Is that, is the old meter still there, obviously?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How long will that take? Two weeks, three weeks to go and have it tested, or?
No.
Where's it have to go, somewhere in the state of Wisconsin here?
Coldfax, yeah.
Oh, just the coldfax?
Yeah, guys.
So a couple days they get it?
I'd say a week, yeah.
And they will put it under extreme heat and all that?
Jared, do you want a new sprayer van?
A what?
Just want a new transit van?
Maybe. Wait, what you doing?
We're gonna give you a good deal.
Whoa, hold on a second. It's all electric? Me, me, me and you. Is that for his first year or?
No.
For village units?
Well, you can't just ask him.
Is it your electric?
Yeah.
Is it going to your?
No.
Oh!
Today was, I had to go run on the generator.
What?
I don't? Yeah, he only had ten miles left.
Shut up. So you brought a diesel or gas generator?
Smoking like crazy?
Would you take dentures, please? Did you tell him, like, can you get off that new solar area? Solar panel?
Ninety miles an hour. He was getting one thirty-five and stuff.
Cold effects.
They gotta keep the battery pack up.
And the whole final, you keep it in the battery pack.
And the compartment.
Thirty-five miles.
And if we get them below, if you drive them too bad and you draw them down to temperature, you can't charge it till you warm them up.
Okay, here's a question. What, what does Tesla, what do they do to heat them cars?
I think.
Yourself?
Electric heating.
It's just an electric.
That must just burn juice like a noob tomorrow, too, doesn't it?
They, that battery pack, it's itself only in the cold.
Well, I, I noticed that all the electric EV yard dogs at the post office in Eagan are no longer there.
Hope they got rid of them.
They got rid of them. Not a one B and U is great now, last winter, they all had snow on it because not one guy would get into it because he said he froze his ass off it and he goes, I refuse to grab that piece of wood. They all see all their animals. Well, we got enough for a meeting, so. So get this thing rolling, we wanna wait a few more minutes. Did Doug, did anybody get ahold of Doug?
Jared left him a voicemail.
Jared was all Doug Newton.
Left a voicemail, Amy said she was coming, I talked to her yesterday. She's gotta leave by seven.
Company time.
We'll be done by nine.
Company tally, he's gonna say.
Company what?
Tally. Yeah, so.
I always thought it was company time.
Company tally.
What's that mean?
I don't know.
Probably, probably.
Say that again?
Company tally.
Jumping? Are you coming?
Company tally.
What does company tally mean?
I don't know.
Are you gonna cover the meeting?
Yeah.
It's at five thirty.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, well, we left you a voicemail, but I don't believe.
Austin would've been late.
I would've been late.
I got three calls.
Oh, he hung up on me.
Look, I guess he's coming. He's in a hurry.
Yeah, I didn't know, I was gonna, I was gonna waltz in here at six o'clock.
I said, Austin, it's at five thirty.
What? Five thirty? So why did I have a missed phone call from the village? I call Steve, I call Mark.
Oh, it was Terry that called.
Yeah, big shirt lands those at five thirty.
Next week's meeting's at six o'clock, just let you know.
Thanks for, obviously, yeah.
Cause I'm not company.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
See, tomorrow at five thirty again, right?
Tomorrow, yeah. What's tomorrow? Like, I'm comparing that to my home neighbors. Four, to replace the Graham Spire.
Um, no, it's to replace.
Jerry?
Jerry.
Jerry, no.
But it's just, so.
So who's gonna be?
Moose is gonna be.
Moose is gonna go up, it's gonna be Moose's.
He's trying to get, I hate how what I call the class. So, yeah.
Probably Class Bs with Merlot.
We're trying to get the same, no, the next one.
Oh.
All the secondary, it's low waste, low water.
Yeah, long time no see. We haven't seen each other for, what, a couple months now?
At least about a thunderstorm where rural usually. Thunderstorm, dark clouds comes through those.
Snow's balls.
Snow's balls, the day. Go three sixty on the way out across the Hudson Bridge. Go, go nice and easy over there.
Time to do an interview schedule tomorrow, Mark. Five thirty.
What time do you have an interview schedule tomorrow?
Uh, five thirty, six and six thirty. I got one, three, and then like, odd six, number six.
Why, does the Packers play tomorrow? It's called DVR.
Oh, they played Detroit. The only home.
No, they're not.
You could try, they could beat on the DVR's laptop.
You got the other by seven.
I don't know, I think players up. But.
It'll be a good game, long.
What'd you say, five thirty, six?
What time's the game at?
Five thirty, six, yeah.
Oh, you don't have company tally?
Public Works, that's where you normally.
Don't dilly-dally around.
A lot of people, uh, they don't see. We've got ten minutes here, no.
Did you guys go hunting this morning? Oh, well, you're over at, you're, you're over at, and the neighbors pretty late, but I came home last night. I didn't see any lights on, but I definitely didn't wanna be in with the question, dude, he's on hot tip, so. Can't understand anything. Wow, many things, Jesus, you was, that's, that's damn good to follow you, Clark. I would kick you guys off, we'll just put Taylor on. We're welcome here. Oh, so Brad, no, damn, I moved it. There was some miscommunication again after you'd left, and we talked with Quinn, but we got all squirreled away, so. Brad is talking to a guy to get in there and answer.
Hey, I got a little bit great, man.
Yeah, you were, you were white as a ghost when I told you, when I told you Quinn was on his way, you were white as a paper. So you're like the. Were you so scared for there, Clark? Grandma, like this way. Hey, why'd you stay from this? Wait, it's not, it's way ahead here right now.
Glad I got a meeting.
Yeah.
Well, he was good, though.
He really teamed up.
But we had about eight hundred papers sit in the conference room, we just got done talking about it, and. He was, he was good.
You told me to just shut up.
You what?
You told me to just sit there and shut up.
Yeah, just, you be quiet, just.
Company tally.
He hung up on me, must've moved the book in.
No, I'll get my trash can about a block away.
Oh, yeah, I bet it.
Hold call meeting to order. Hold call.
Ben Dam?
Yes.
Forbes?
Here.
Jurgens?
Here.
Negador?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Ben Summer?
Here.
Worland?
Here.
All present.
To further discussion of proposed twenty twenty-five grant budget.
Okay, so this is a continuation of the work session. Um, there was four items that we were gonna research, so go ahead, Steve.
Uh, the, the items that we, uh, were asked about last time, we've taken, I think we've taken care of, hopefully addressed the. I think, uh, the one question was on the police squad car sinking fund, we did bump that up to sixty-five thousand. So that covered just about all the cost and the new squad plus outfitting it. So we, I think we addressed that. We also, I think there was a question about the line item, the revenue, it was called tax equivalent. And I wasn't sure exactly what that was, so I reached out to our auditors, and, and basically it's a, uh, part of the audit that's related to the water utility. Um, it's a calculation based on the waters, capital assets, and the mill rates assessment ratio, and then turns out it's an expense to the water utility and then turn, and it's a revenue for the general fund. So it's something that the auditors put together, they calculate what it's gonna be, uh, when they're doing the audit at the end of the year, and he said typically we can, uh, put in a hundred thousand dollars in a revenue line under tax equivalent is what it's called. And it's related to the water utility, for, for lack of a better explanation. I think that was a question you had last, last time, so that's what that's about. We also, I think there was a question, I think you had a question about making sure we did dramatically lower the, the two expense categories, PD and DPW. So we did some, uh, checking, and on the Excel spreadsheets, we added boxes that showed, the main reason that there's a, a difference here is because past years we've had a street project, a major street project included in the regular budget, and this year it's not in there because it's gonna be a bond. So that's the reason for the difference in the, in the totals, I think that was a concern you had.
So in the, just to clarify, that was in the police budget, we had.
The pe- the public works.
And the public works.
Public works, yeah. You had a concern, I think there was a drop in the overall expenses because we don't have a street project.
Yeah.
In the budget for twenty twenty-five. There had been in the past years, and so that's why there was that drop.
Okay.
But we didn't want a drop, did we?
No, so I thought what we were going to do was keep, uh, their budget year over year neutral, and then, um, any difference that we needed for street projects, take bondage issuance for that. So pay, essentially pay with tax dollars, cash tax dollars, what we can, and then.
Okay.
And, and essentially finance the rest, and then, um, just leaving their budget year over year neutral. Unless we needed to use those funds someplace else in the budget, redirect that someplace else in the budget. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah. It, I mean, the, we're looking at an increase in, in the PD expenses with some expense, extra expenses they have, so I think there is other places for it to go. Wage increases and other, other expenses that, that are going up from year to year.
I think what we're gonna, I was waiting on was, or what we're gonna look at was the total budget, everything rolled up together, and did it stay neutral year over year? Cause if public works went down, then somebody else went up, if it stayed at neutral, right?
No, if somebody else didn't go up from this budget, that was gonna come, that would come from levy, I mean, from debt. So when we sell that for a street project, that hundred and fifty would come from debt. And we took that out at the beginning because we're trying to keep the levy increase as low as we can, and so that was one area that. But that, that was targeted for a street project, so it's not an operating thing that we reduce in any other line items. It's, uh, for the street, you know, for a possible street project. But I took that out because I would like, my recommendation would be to pay for it all from the bond sale when we financed the project. And that, and that way, cause that's gonna make it tougher, we're trying to keep the, you know, levy increase as low as we can, and so that was how we do it. So it's not like we took money out of public works, like, you know, maintenance or equipment or something like that. It was out of an area that my recommendation would be to take that money from debt, from when we sell bonds.
Understood, but you're not, you're not hearing what I'm saying. If public works goes down a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in their budget year over year because we did a whole debt issuance for the streets instead of partial, that's fine, but then that money needs to be spoken for someplace else. You need to increase the budget in another area because we can't have our budget going down year over year like that. It won't work, don't do that. So either put that money back in the public works budget, or fluff up the other budgets because we're going to take on additional costs, like adding headcount in the, in the administration, or buying more police cars, or I don't care, but make up for it someplace else so that when your total budget goes up, let's just play with pretend numbers for a minute. It's, uh, in twenty twenty-three, the budget was twenty million dollars, it's not, whatever. And then in twenty twenty-four, it should be twenty million dollars, and twenty twenty-five, it should be twenty million dollars, or go up by whatever if we're gonna actually have some sort of figuring in our tax bases, which we haven't before. It should just be all net neutral, and then we'll figure out the debt financing later, right? So just leave it in, or, and that would be way easier than taking budgets down and then trying to carry that forward in pre, in next, in coming years, because then it'll look like an increase when we try to bring it back in another year, don't do that. The optics of it look bad from, I know what you're doing, but the optics to the taxpayer does not look good when you take budgets down like that and then try to bring them back. Really easy to reduce a budget, it's very difficult to bring those dollars back. Ask Rita about it in the library.
Oh, I understand totally, I can, I get it, and that's why we don't ever touch, I would never recommend touching operating costs, capital costs that are part of a budget year, you know, and this isn't gonna reveal what you're saying, but, you know, we. But it's the overall budget, like, Steve, if you look at the overall budget increase, the levy, we're showing an increase, so that's going up, but is the overall budget, you know, the five million gone up from last year? Cause I guess my, uh, was it, was.
Yeah, I think, I think it was an increase.
It was, it was increasing.
Did we add that total to that spreadsheet, Mark?
That's what I'm looking at.
Four point six?
Is that, is that twenty twenty-four? So it's still going from that to five point?
Very.
Five minutes, five minutes, seven, six thousand.
Four point six million last year.
And we're going up? To that five million?
Five million seventy-six thousand.
No, that's everything, like, the whole works.
Right.
Total budget.
Right.
That's the whole total budget, so the total budget is.
So we took, we took a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of public works, and then we he's, we increased spend five hundred and fifty thousand dollars someplace else.
Yeah, between all the other things combined.
What are those things?
Well, you have to look at each one of the budgets.
No, you just. Then you gotta tell me.
You want me to take every single line item that's going up?
Yeah, I want you to tell me the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in all the other budgets. If you decrease a budget a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the total budget's going up five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's a half a million dollars of additional spend that's being cranked into other budgets, and I wanna know what it is, materially speaking. What are the items that make that up? That's exactly what the budget review is for.
I won't beat you up no more.
Thank you.
I brought Mark.
Yeah.
Christine, two hundred. No, it meant you without, it's a total.
And that's what I wanna know.
How much of it was the tax increase? Is that the couple hundred thousand of that?
Yeah.
You know, for instance, it would be something like, well, uh, COLA increases three percent of that on wages of a million dollars, you're saying, so, whatever, like materially speaking.
Yeah, no, and this, you know, I guess my only defense is this is the first, one of the budgets I've done in this program, and, you know, we're trying to show, okay, each department budget has, um, you know, the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, actual twenty-four budget, twenty-five proposed. So like, I can look at each other, totals of the budget, but I would have to go through each one of these line items and say, well, this one went up, this one went down, you know, there's hundreds of them.
Yes.
Of line items, so.
That's what you have to do in a budget.
That's what we did when we, well, right, but when we gave the department budgets to the committee and then to the board, they show each item in our system, in CASL, they show each of the revenue and expenditure items, and they show the net changes. So I'd have to read through those separately, or I could just talk about the totals in each one of the departments, what their total budget is, what the difference is, like an EMS, you know, going from, um, expenses of, went from two seventy to two eighty-three.
Yeah, I need, I just need a summary.
Well, that's what's on there, that's what's on each one of the department.
No, that is by department. A summary says, has a schedule on it that says, we reduced public works a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We increased police two hundred thousand dollars. I increased library four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
The four hundred thousand dollars makes up new bookcases, blah, 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 blah. Like, just what are the big material items that are causing the budget to go up year over year, and then, like, I need to summarize that.
Okay.
If you start looking at some of these twenty-four and twenty-five budgets, there's no way that's.
Cause you only have the breakdown on the administrative budget, right, at the end?
Of the totals?
Of the totals, I, I see that. I'm agreeing with Christine, like, I'd like to see a, a last year's, okay, public works, you know, this year is at one point one five three. What, what was last year?
Okay, so we do have public works, twenty-two actual, twenty-three actual, twenty-four, it's on the bottom. We have PD. We have library. So I guess the only one we don't have is the, the admin, total admin, and then the total, total.
Water and sewer in the admin?
No, water and sewer's in public works. There's a separate water budget that we made this year.
And there obviously is sewer budget, too. There's always been a sewer budget, right? There's never been a sewer budget either?
No.
Sewer called.
So we have just a water budget, or we have a water and a sewer budget?
There's, they're separate funds.
There's, I know there's separate funds, I didn't have.
And they've never, we've never had a water or a sewer budget.
Till this year, we got a water budget.
Right.
So next year, we need to have a sewer budget.
Hey, you could, you could look into getting that done next year.
Is that something the auditors have been asking about at all, or no?
They've never asked us to do.
Is that surprising, or not really?
I don't know, it's a question. They're just, they never asked about it, so.
Cause I always thought we had a sewer budget, but I guess it was just because there was always just that sewer fund.
Yeah.
We never really kinda had a water fund until this year, kind of, well, we did, but. Well, that's for next year, then. Steve gets away with that one, doesn't have to worry about it.
I think the auditors look at all the numbers.
Huh?
The auditors look at all the numbers.
Oh, I know they do.
At your sewer, your revenue and your expenses.
Yeah, I knew, I knew when those auditors would come in because.
Sit on, they'd sit on the night.
Trace would panic for a week before.
Have you seen, has the admin office salaries been updated?
Yeah.
They don't look right. So if you look at, that, even at the admin salary, that went down.
It's all in the administration budget, budget.
And then we've only got for the, the office admin, we've only got in a, a small amount.
Some of those expenses are allocated to water and sewer. So when you do a payroll of your admin.
Yep.
Part of it al- is allocated to the general fund, and part of it's allocated to water, and part of it's allocated to sewer.
Yeah, that's what we, we looked last year.
Because they spend a lot of time looking at water.
Okay, so the admin job that I get that.
Like Jo- like Joanie's admin salary was like eleven thousand last year.
Right.
We looked at those last, but they had to look into, she does so much water bills and sewer bills.
So then, Christine, to answer a big part of the.
Then you'd have to go look on the.
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand is for.
And then she'd get a bunch from that, because she does so much for the water and sewer, it's paid off that.
The new PD building. So that's three hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred, no, hang on, I can't add, three hundred and fifteen thousand. Hundred and ten thousand for principal and two hundred and five thousand interest.
Do we add any revenue into that?
There's a revenue line item for that.
Rent.
For the rent, which was, we just cutting.
Right now?
Took a guesstimate out of it because we really don't have enough in place, we're getting monies.
Do we budget low low for that incoming revenue?
We budget like twenty thousand a year or something like.
A couple a month.
Yeah, a month, that's right. We're getting twenty-two thousand right now per month.
Never mind that. It was what?
Point three.
So, like, sixty-five thousand.
You and I want exactly. Where you and I.
Oh, they want you to do that.
Be the same. Or, like I said.
Or tell them.
Right, right.
Okay.
P is about the same. So actually, the police budget went up by thirty, so there's thirty, that's probably what went into the sinking fund?
No, that thirty is the four percent. Raise, COLA.
COLA. Okay, so then.
So should that, so then, wait a second, police, the police model, it's rolled up on the police tab, should it roll directly over to here, then? Cause the police is showing, that's why I'm just trying to make it confused. So that's the twenty-five number, right? The six-five-three, six-nine-seven?
Okay.
Should be with the police out, right? If you go over to the admin rollout, it's listed like one, it seems like it's different.
PD is one-six-one-four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not including their debt service, though, for the, for the.
So that's sitting somewhere else, and that's where the difference.
Yep, and that's at eight ninety-seven, a debt service.
Yeah, it shows here one-six-one-four.
Yep, so that difference between the six-one-four and the six-five-three is basically the.
Debt service.
Okay. That's what I was getting confused with.
I know, it's, it's hard to follow this, I gotta.
It's not an easy thing.
So in.
So police contracted raises are higher than the standard COLA rate, is that true? Yeah, by a half a percent?
Yeah.
That's a three-year contract. And that's because they're union.
Yeah.
Is that what it was?
Changed by year.
Did a three-year?
Yeah.
That was just last year, guys, this will be the first year of it, right?
That's the last year of their contract.
Last year. This coming year, or last?
Twenty twenty-five will be the.
Oh, so there'll be negotiations at, in, in October, or September, or August, or whatever you guys have. All right, God, that went by fast.
Yeah.
Three years.
I swear to God, it was just last, you guys did that.
It's been two and three.
We have so much fun here, it goes too quickly. What do you think, Doug?
I'm looking good.
You're not even looking at the budget yet.
I know.
So public works for next year was one point two-two-zero?
Yeah.
But on the admin side, where it's totaled for the year, it's one-one-five-three?
Cause we took out the debt service, uh, added it in the eight ninety-seven.
For public works?
Yeah, we, we added all the debt service into the eight ninety-seven, so we took some, uh, the public works and the PD numbers there in yellow did not include. numbers there in yellow, did not include the debt service that's tied to the buildings or the dump truck squad cars and et cetera.
And also, did you say, uh, last year's was budget?
If I was looking at it right, I'm at four point six.
Are the doors?
No.
The door just decided to start closing.
Was it closing?
Yeah, it closed up a little bit. Are doors that?
It always does. Sean, you got that budget all figured all over there?
Yeah. So is this, the debt, the, the debt, this is the debt service for the year, right? Are these other items, are those actually the total rollups, or just on the same line?
Well, I ask you, Sean, well, that's, you like that idea that, I mean, you, you know budgets to an extent.
Yeah, yeah.
You like that, Christine, I like Christine's idea too. What do you think of that?
Well, yeah, remind me, Christine, most of the changes in public works that you guys are trying to figure out.
It's a hundred, like, uh, it's a hundred fifty thousand, a hundred forty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars.
Okay, just wondering, seven-five-two-seven.
So I show, I was just looking at my, some of my numbers, that.
That, yeah.
Net debt levy last year, so net of all revenues that reduced, what kind of put on the.
That looks like twenty-three.
Was four hundred and seventy thousand. This year, again, net of all revenues, including rent on the police building and everything, I show it being five seventy this year. So that's a hundred thousand of it right there. Now, you, if you keep the public works budget the same, and you keep that a hundred thousand there, you're gonna have to levy that extra hundred to cover the increase in the debt. But I think that might.
That's building debt.
Some of that hundred fifty thousand is, last year's net debt levy, debt levy was four seventy, this year is five seventy. And you may have moved that public works over to cover the debt instead of having to raise. With the idea that Mark started firm with, instead of using cash for the levy in twenty-five to pay for public works, you're gonna borrow for those projects.
Yeah.
And then the first payment on that will hit you in twenty-six, it won't hit you in twenty-five. So I, I, that might be part of it, Steve, in terms of what I was looking at.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so I just wrote down all of the department's twenty-twenty-four budgets, and then I wrote down their twenty-twenty-five budgets. And then I looked at your, and I added that all up, and I can't get to the same totals that you've got on the administration budget for twenty-twenty-five. So I'm not sure how this puts out. So for instance. Public works on the summary on that admin page says one-one-five-three-five-hundred. But in their individual budget for twenty-twenty-five, I see one-two-two-one-nine-three-three.
The, the difference there is the debt service that they, that we have allocated to that for the new dump truck. It's fifty-four thousand in principal and about twelve thou, almost thirteen thousand in interest expense.
Well, I don't know, I don't know how I'm supposed to understand what the year-over-year differences are here in these departments. So I've got different totals on different pages, and I can't even do like a year-over-year comparison. So when I add all of this up, library, police, public works, quarter, admin, forget EMS, it's a, it's a net neutral budget. It's like a thousand dollars, because they have revenues offsetting their expenses. When I add all of that up for twenty-twenty-four, I get three point eight million dollars of spend in twenty-twenty-four. When I add all of the individual department budgets up in twenty-twenty-five, I get four point two million dollars. And then when I go look at your summary, it says five million dollars. So if I look at twenty-twenty-four versus twenty-twenty-five on the individual statements by department, I get that we're increasing our budget spend five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. That makes about sense, but then when I go look at your totals over here, I don't have the same twenty-twenty-five number that you do, and I don't have any way to reconcile what the differences are. So. I just don't know how to make sense of it. We're increasing the budget, the spend, five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, and I don't know where it is. Like, I can't clearly see this. I can't say, oh, well, that clearly is coming from a combination of departments. Uh, one is in, um, the admin budget. And that's being driven by COLA increases and adding two new positions. Like, I can't see that, you know what I mean? Um, and so, because the numbers don't put out, and I don't really get what's going on here, and we don't have a good summary, all right, I don't know really what I'm looking at. And I'm sure you know what these numbers are, right? But I don't.
Right, okay.
Is the point. And I don't know how to make sense of it, because I don't know all of the, you know, workings, like, unless I have you here, and I, I bark a bunch of questions at you, and then you answer me, and I write them all down, right? It's just not really very effective. I don't know how to, I don't know how to challenge it or ask questions, or, or even, I don't know how to digest it.
Cause the debt. The debt service is not a budget, is it?
Well, they're taking it out of the cash basis and putting it into debt basis. So it's impacting the budget by, it's favorable in this, in one view, and it's unfavorable in a longer-term view. And it's just difficult to understand it. So I just need a good summary.
You didn't label it turns.
From my view, like, with my math, going with each individual department.
So I, I thought that's what we asked at the board meeting, and it doesn't look like anything's changed on here.
Well, they made a couple of other adjustments, but we didn't get the summary.
We didn't get a summary.
So when I look at the individual departments, the primary drivers of the year-over-year increases are in the admin budget. And then we've got this new water budget. So in twenty-twenty-four, there was a water budget of twenty-four hundred dollars. In twenty-twenty-five, there's a water budget or an expense of a hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred. That's what it looks like in these detailed schedules.
So are you, are you looking at a water budget, or?
I'm looking at individual department. And writing down what was the total spend in twenty-twenty-four, and what is the proposed spend or budget in twenty-twenty-four, and what is the proposed budget in twenty-twenty-five. What's the year-over-year difference?
Well, the waters, we just made the water one up.
Well, then, then our, it should be a net neutral year-over-year. You're not increasing or decreasing. If it's, if you're just making it up.
Or just started one, never had one before.
Right. Right, but then that's not a budget increase, but that's how it reads when I look through these papers. It looks like we have this weird water increase. So are these numbers right that I'm looking at? Are these total? I'm sure they're, they're right, but I don't understand them. They don't make any sense to me. If we didn't have a budget for water in twenty-twenty-four, it's.
Still paying.
It's got a total there.
Yeah.
And in twenty-twenty-five, we would expect them to be remarkably similar. They're not. There's a hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollar difference. And I don't know what that means. I'm sure it means something to you, but I don't get it.
It's a better base.
And if that's not, if that's not a real budget increase, right, because we're going from no budget to a budget, it's just year-over-year is probably flat. And then that's not driving part of my half-million-dollar year-over-year increase. So then what is?
Sure, if looking at each, as Mark said earlier, looking at each item to see what the, you know, where the increase is coming from. Is that kind of what we're looking at doing to answer the question, is finding the actual line items that come up with the, the change?
I think it's looking at the year-over-year bottom line for each department, just like I've done here. You have, what, six departments, five departments? It's not many, it's a handful. You have a handful of departments. We have last year's budget, and we have this year's budget. What's the difference between them? And the material items that are driving that difference. So I'm not looking for a hundred percent reconciliation here, but give me eighty-twenty. What's eighty, what is driving eighty percent of those costs? What are the three, the top three things that are driving the year-over-year increase?
Basically, just have like a summary of like, all right, you know, everything is stayed the same except for this wanted an increase, this line item, this, is that what you're kind of looking for, something, yeah?
Yeah. This department decreased.
So, yeah.
With our tax revenue increases, we got, really, where do we end up again? Are we flat to, we are, we balanced? Are we two hundred thousand over budget with?
No.
That's something we want to look for too, right?
Yeah.
We wanna be balanced. Stay flat.
Probably one of five communities in the whole state that actually started asking questions like this. I bet you everybody just flows through, it's good enough for us, good. Aye, 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 on budgets.
Okay, well, as Mark said, this is our first time ever doing this. I've never done this before, and Tracy had done, you know, had done everything on it. So I'm doing my best, and I will make every effort to get your questions answered. I, I don't, I think I wanna, I don't know if I can dig into it right now, of course, but.
Yeah.
I say I hear what you're saying, though.
Also, I don't think she's mad at you though, Steve.
I'm not mad.
She's not mad at you. She kinda grilled you a little bit, but that's. So we don't have what Tracy was doing for a budget?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, that's, that's what this is. Like, the past years were what she did.
She had, remember, it was all secretive.
It was, it was the same software.
With, that was her thing. She did it on her own, and I guarantee you, Steve was the better part of it, any bit. It was one of those things that like, I do that, and nobody else is gonna see what I do.
And I worked.
Is that all about correct? Am I somewhat correct in that, Steve?
Yeah, I, I, I didn't have anything to do with it in the past.
That's what I do.
I worked a different, completely different software program for twenty years, so. But, I mean, a lot, there's a lot of similarities with the accounts and all the things out, but it is different, and it's. I will say, it's not the most intuitive thing in the world, trying to use this software, but.
You don't have to be restricted to the software. Tracy was putting everything, exporting it from the software and dumping it into Excel so she could do sounds.
Well, that's what this is. It's the same, I mean, we would take.
And you're doing the exact same thing that she's using.
I mean, we would take, like, the public works budget, and there's a, like, I call it my Excel for budgeting, and you, it makes up a spreadsheet, and you can dump it into Excel. So it's, this is the same thing. I mean, in, in the big picture terms, I'm not saying the dollar amounts, but.
Sean, is there something else that's more, you know, easily available to get, like, some software that's, makes it easy for everybody? Is there software out there that, other than what we are doing, is there something we could purchase and say, hey, use this software program, and it's gonna make life a lot easier for board members to understand it, and. Stand, or does.
I'm not familiar with which one you're using.
Casell, Civic.
Civic?
Yeah, Civic.
So I do, I think that's, has a pretty good usage around the state.
Yeah, it's a big.
It's, it's a pretty big program.
They're gonna want to get the reports.
Yeah.
But I, yeah, I think it's the, the use of it, getting, uh, getting acquainted with it, so you can generate the stuff that can be most useful to the elected officials and, and highlight the things that Christine was bringing up, right? To highlight what changed from overtime.
Yeah, that's what we need to focus on, yeah. Is the year-over-year bottom line kind of thing. And if we were focusing on that area, that's, I mean, that's doable. I don't know what other word I can use.
Can I just create a schedule for you? I, it would take me like ten seconds to rip out a little schedule of, of what I'm asking for.
Yeah.
You just fill in the cells with the totals.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll give her a shot.
And then send that out, and I'll be able to digest.
Yeah, cause we're not trying to hide anything. We're not trying to.
No, we, we, we understand that this is like your first time going with this kind of stuff, I mean, especially Steve, because we all knew that that was Tracy's thing, this was, and we asked questions, she would bark.
Yeah, just to think about too, if you put this out with these numbers that don't die, people in the public are gonna see it too, and they're gonna be digging.
We already had one, we already had one at a meeting last month.
Get it very clear, so that somebody can quickly justify the numbers.
All the numbers have to match.
Some of it, though, is, like, Sean, when we talk about where we report debt, and where we, like, some of this is, we're following how the auditors report all this stuff. And it is not very intuitive, and it's not easy to follow. And I guarantee you, every year I've gone through a budget, whether it was Banyan, or Civic, or whatever, and you look from the gross total to each department, you're gonna be confused. I mean, there's always gonna be some of that, in big term, I mean.
Yeah, but then you put, you put footnote, you put footnotes at the bottom, and they're disclosing what those differences are. Asterisk, asterisk, and then you put your footnote. Like, that's how you do that. It has to be understandable by the general.
We do have some footnotes, but if we have totals, like, you, you make a list, Christine, and then we can try to answer what's in there. I mean, yeah, that's, I think that's something we can do.
Yeah, that's something, I mean, yeah.
And this is helping me learn this better, I'll be honest with you. I mean, I'm digging into this way more than, you know, so it's, this stuff doesn't hurt. Like, when I get these questions, and I go through this stuff, it's, it's beneficial for me.
Now, let me put together a schedule that you guys can help to fill in.
Yep.
And then send me the supporting documents behind it, so I can put it out.
Okay.
And then I'll ask some pointed questions that will help the rest of the board members, and then eventually help like digest this information, because anybody who's got just a little bit of math and finance is gonna come after this, if it, if we've got different tools on different pages, and we can't clearly identify the main drivers of the increase.
I think we're gonna need footnotes where there's different. I think we're going to need footnotes where there's differences. That's what I'm saying, because when you have to take debt out of one area and report it in another area in the total, that's going to make that department budget look bigger than what's going to show up in the big four-page budget.
Yeah, right, yes.
Putting it.
Yes, I understand.
So we need to footnote that stuff so we can explain why it's different.
Yes, agreed.
So then the other question is, we have to get some kind of a levy number to the county here pretty quick. And they were just calling us today asking. And I'm not trying to push this, I'm just saying this is what. The levy number, because they have to get a tax statement, so. In short order, so.
That's why we're having this meeting today.
That's why we pushed this. And I'm not trying to push this, don't get me wrong, not, but.
You're not going to push this, you're not going to push anyone.
That's what they told us.
We've got to sit here until midnight.
Like they try to disclose everything. And that's what the county's telling us is they need that number so they can, so the levy number. That doesn't mean that the total budget number has to, can't be modified or changed or whatever. But it's the levy number that they want, find a levy number from us. They called us after the last board meeting and we said, well, we've got a meeting on the fourth. So anyway.
Just stall, it's, just stall, like stall with us. Stall it off.
Okay. I don't, yeah, I don't know.
Not like it, they got to get their tax statements out, so.
Yeah, I'm not, say, we're trying to do everything in full transparency.
Well, I think, I mean, I'm not saying that this is wrong whatsoever, but I think we can move on to approve this. And you have some questions to be asked and.
Do you know where we're at from the levy from last? Yeah, that's what I wanted to say. From what, the tax increase? Because I saw you had, we had some revenue increase.
Yes.
The tax.
So the levy reven, the levy amount that we're proposing, is that the right word? It's 3.270. Last year.
3.453.
Last year was. So the total, last year was 3,053,615. This year, what we're talking about for levy is 3,270. That's what the increase is from last year.
So what does that mean? It's 216,984?
Yep.
Increase? What does that mean to our taxpayers?
So I did run this, I got this from Sean. I'm trying to take one of these and pass it.
Be fast.
Where's the, no, last year, this year.
And that's what, that you're estimating to put this out was to cover?
Well, this doesn't include the TID levy. So the 3,270 does not include the TID levy. That's separate. And Sean can probably explain that better.
So it covers everything in the budget.
Right.
It's not that we've talked about, we've added, we do payroll, we do everything.
Yes.
Okay.
Plus all the other revenue sources.
Correct, you know, so went up 270 or two whatever, I guess, last year.
So last year made a levy increase.
Well, I didn't go back to your house 24 or something.
Probably last year.
Yeah.
Did it, do you know how much it was?
I don't. Yeah, because then we, we, we did one at the same time in the county. Did it wait once?
Well, yeah, when they, when they came by, when the, wanted that.
Extra stuff too.
Yeah, that, well, the first one got denied, the referendum, and then the last one just got passed here in April.
Yep.
So not only, you know, you look here, you're looking, you're looking between 80 to $400 more and.
2.608.
What now?
2.608.
What's that number?
That's 2023.
As a percentage?
Levy increase now.
2.692. So it looks like the village taxes go up between 80 to 350, depending on your house is worth 100 or half a million. And that's not including the county taxes, that's going to skyrocket.
Right.
Because of whoever voted yes for that referendum, I mean.
All right, so I've got an assessed value of $350,000. It's a year-over-year increase of $241. At 400,000, that's an increase of $276. So roughly 9%. 450,000, that's 310,000. 500,000, uh, here at 345 dollars. So it's like $300, right? Somewhere between 250 and 350. Assessed values of 350 and higher. And I'm picking up on that number because everybody's assessed values are stupid and outrageous or at risk of being stupid and outrageous because of housing prices. So it's, we have a fair number of especially new homes that have gone up recently that are in that category. So. And that's like a 9% increase, I'm thinking, right? Is that what I said?
I think it's eight, yeah, 85, but.
8.85?
Yep, 8.85 is what I'm getting. It's a combination of two things, that the levy went up 7.23% year-over-year. Total levy. But the other, the reason the percentage is higher is your assessed value actually went down. If you look at the top of the sheet that Mark handed out, you guys, your taxes last year was 412 million in assessed value around the village.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
And this year it's 405.
So how did that happen?
I, I think the biggest contributing factor of that, if Baldwin's consistent with many other communities, is if you remember, the state pulled personal property taxes out. So that's not in that tax base anymore. I would guess that's the biggest contributor to the, the reduction in the assessed value for the whole village.
What was personal property tax? What, what was that? I've seen that on some taxes.
The biggest stuff was usually, there were certain businesses, manufacturing and commercial that would have like, so as an example, the checkout lot aisles at a grocery store, that was considered personal property, I believe, that filled it. But then it was also things like bolts and, and campers and other things that you would own on a personal basis that you would have. You got taxed on that before, but it wasn't part of your property taxes, it was a.
Yeah, because I, years ago, when I lived in the township.
Yeah.
I seen that, man, I always ask myself, what's personal property? Like, you know, Joe down the road there, why does he have like $250 in personal property? And nobody could answer it for him, I was just curious.
Yeah, that, that's what it is. And I think the state's at the point now where pretty much all of that's been eradicated. So the impact is, you lose some value.
Right.
When that happens.
Okay.
I think they're giving you some aid, right? They kind of tried to offset this.
Increased the state aids to make up for it.
Yeah.
Do you have any more questions on the draft budget?
Doesn't help if a million dollar, nice building, Main Street, all tax coming in there. What's that? Families or something?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, three, discussing possible action on proposed 2025 general fund and ambulance budget. We probably should do these separately, huh? Not all one, we'll do the ambulance one first.
So I guess it's just one resolution that's been done and passed.
Is it, is it been just one budget and tax levy?
That, that resolution proves the budget and the tax levy.
And we have motion.
Followed what was done in previous years.
Motion for the 2024-16 budget levy tax adoption.
So.
We have a motion. Are we going to wait to get the numbers?
Well, Mark's saying we can. That the county needs a, needs to respond on the tax.
So are we approving just the levy or are we approving the budget and the levy?
Well.
This would be part of the resolution.
So basically, it's the levy, if you read the resolution, um, that's what they need approved.
So we do the tax levy, then we can get their information.
Yeah, we can come back and change the budget.
And then you guys can have some questions answered by next Wednesday. For the budget, because the budget's kind of our thing. What's the levy, the big thing is the levy, so they can get the tax paperwork out, all the.
Once we give them that number, taxes go up. And we don't have the answer why.
Right.
That's my, that's my issue.
But one, not one week, they're not going to have everything printed out by one week.
No, but if you give them the number and say, we can't do that to the taxpayers, increase taxes. It's already done. Their taxes are already going up. You give them that number, they're going with it, it's a done deal, I'm assuming. You can't go back and change it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true.
Yep.
Well, there, there was a hearing on this budget, on this levy, it was 324 million at that time. Now, we've lowered it since then, but there was, you know, there, we followed the publication of the hearing requirements and a few people came. So that's when the budget, you know, when the levy was publicly talked about, that's how all the villages and cities. You know, they have a, they have a hearing, talk about, here's a proposal budget, here's a proposal levy. And there's a breakdown in the paper, you know, it's here posted. I'm not saying that is your question, but that's when it was publicly put out there.
Well, is there a set date?
I, I really don't know.
That the county needs to have this by? I mean.
I know Pol County is the 15th. I don't, I'm trying to find where St. Croix County requires theirs at least. I mean, can we get the summary numbers by next Wednesday and then we?
Put it back on the agenda.
Put it back on the agenda for next Wednesday? I mean, we're talking five days, just days.
So if we get the, the increases and Christine will get us a list of. And we get those back by next Wednesday, so.
Kind of what you're saying, I'd like to, I'd like to just see the final numbers in that budget.
I think that's the board wants.
If you have the levy that's over, you'll go on to 100,000.
So I'm not going to go second largest, so.
And we're talking. There's bigger difference on the budget side, where's, where's it going? I guess I think we just need to, at least we can all feel like, you know, we're at the 95% confident level.
I'd work with Mark and Steve to get a schedule put together so that we can have the answers necessary so we can get this done.
Waiting a few more days is going to hurt.
Sure.
Well, what's the county going to do? They got to wait for it. I mean.
Yeah, we meet on the 11th.
We got to.
So it's still.
If Pol County's is the 15th, normally I would assume that St. Croix is probably pretty darn close. Because when, when do you have to pay them? Like, is it January 31st and July 31st is property tax due dates or whatever, right?
Yeah, we typically get the bills around the 20th of December, so then we mail them out and these people want to pay in 2024. Tax basis is.
They want to prepay.
I think it's going to work, they, they probably need them by the 13th.
But with the need that they do.
All 11th is fine.
I hope that it matters if we do it Monday or Wednesday.
Yeah, we'll do it Wednesday, so probably need that time of.
Yep.
All right, well. Do that, throw that on for the Wednesday's agenda. Got some homework to do.
I'll get the schedule, I'll choose my line. And then we can have a call call to meet.
Okay. We have any questions?
She likes bourbon.
If I need to come in, I could come in like on a Friday afternoon or this Friday afternoon or something.
I'm not going to be here Friday, but.
That's why I like it, I'm just kidding.
I don't think it's going to matter. I know, I don't think it's.
I can work with Steve.
Let your family bourbon again?
It's expensive.
No, it's expensive.
It's expensive. Okay.
Okay, four, discussing possible action on possible street improvement projects in 2025.
So the committee, we re-met again last week. It's in your packet. We decided to flip-flop our projects on recommendations of Public Works and Engineer. We decided that, the committee was, with the recommendation from Public Works, highly recommended that we, that next year's, it, it's too big to do everything. We, it, yes. It, it, it's just too much of an undertaking. So what we did is, they went back to the drawing board. You have the map for 2025, um, which ties in the streets. We won't have to come back and, and tie in different streets the next year, correct? Graham and Brad, right?
So next year, I mean, we'd go off of, if we're ending here, we'd take off and.
But we're not coming back in intersections, ripping.
This is all one.
Right.
It's not double dangle.
Exactly. So, and we, we, they, the Public Works feels that this is what we can do. I mean. I think you're right. So we, we don't want to, we don't want to, I guess, as a village, get into trouble with taking too much on, we can't handle.
So does this mean that this keeps our Public Works department busy and engaged? And we save having to go out and externally hire more people? Because that's what we would have to do in order to get it all done.
Too much.
Okay.
And we're looking for a good contractor at.
If we do the big one, we're going to go with somebody that we've never had before, even, they are going to be a lot bigger than, than Albright's and probably. That is a, that's a big project.
Committee's recommendation to the board was still split it up, but we took some of our higher-end projects, as you see. So next year would be the 2 million and then 2026 would be the 1.55.
I like the parking lot sitting another year too.
Yeah.
That over there.
And I believe that's why Sean will go over.
So that, that was the committee, that was a committee recommendation.
Yes, please.
I think that's a good idea, Matt. I started thinking about it a little bit too, and it's pretty easy for us to say, just get it all done in one year.
Until you get bad work in here.
Until you get a, yeah, you get two months of rain.
Is that on the same, so, okay, so on the same one was, right, four, four, this is the same item, we're on four, right? So the committee also did on, on recommendation from even Eric. Eric was here, present. My mind is so confused, I'm so busy at work. Anyways, Eric was there, um, on the recommendation from Public Works and Eric. Mark, we, the committee has also decided to stick with errors on that street project. On next year's street project, 2026.
The reason being is that they applied twice actually for CDBG funding and to do that, the second time around, they did 60% plans or biddable plans, not constructible. And so they're probably three-quarters of the way there.
Yeah.
And there is some efficient inefficiencies. You know, I, I offered to eat some of those inefficiencies, but it makes sense to, to stick with what's done.
And then, and then late next year, June or July, we meet as the Streets, Buildings Committee to get one engineer for 2026. That was our committee.
Okay.
All set?
Yeah, we're ready for numbers, man. Give me some good news.
So, got to hand out to kind of frame everything up, but we'll see if, there's some questions that we should focus in on more. But to start out with the first couple of slides, we're, we're heading toward with the street projects this year. Potentially ongoing next year. Wanted to kind of give the, the board a sense of what would the impact of that be in terms of on your total debt levy? Of moving ahead with projects this year and next year. And when we look at the financing, as you'll see in a second, Eric gave the numbers, I think to Mark. Mark and Steve provided them to me. We were able to break it out as to how much of these street projects are street, how much are water and how much are sewer. Uh, so it's, it's going to be broken out in that fashion to charge those different departments, kind of going back to the budget for their share or those different funds. The tax levy for the street share, water share to water and sewer for sewer. Okay? So a couple of just background, the slide number two. Typically for streets, the financing tool is a general obligation borrowing. So where is the village right now? Currently, you've got about 11.5 million in principal outstanding on general obligation debt. And your total capacity is a little bit over 28 million. So that's what the state says. You can't borrow using general obligation debt any more than 28 million. You guys are currently at 11.5. So you got a nice cushion there and that's even after you've done some major projects recently, as you guys know, the EMS building and then uh, the acquisition of a police facility in recent years. So if you go to the next slide, slide number three, probably this one more important to always keep a sense of is. You have debt that you've already issued right now in the past, using general obligation debt, that, that's, that 11.5 million. You have annual principal and interest payments that you owe to different parties to pay that debt back. What you see here is the debt levy net of all revenues from other funding sources than the levy. So when I'm talking about in, in those capacities, or those, those types of revenues are revenues from utilities, revenues from tax increment districts. The lease payments that we're talking about with the police facility, the 200 some thousand a year, or 20,000 a month, whatever. All of those come in. And then what you see here is our projection net of all that. What has to get put on the levy and paid by the, the taxpayers. Uh, so it's net of those revenues. So you could see right now for 2025 where that number is, it's a little bit below 600,000 and then gradually, uh, over time it falls. But we, it's pretty flat because we have the, the long-term debt service for the EMS building and the long-term debt for acquiring the, the police. Uh, and there's some other, uh, past projects in here as well, streaky, uh, streets related as well. Okay, so any, any questions on that?
Are the water towers in there too? The water towers?
The, the utility projects, like a water tower or the sewer treatment plant? Those are being paid by rates and charges of the sewer utility and the water.
So that's not in.
Should not be in here. Correct. Yep, should not be in here. Okay, if we go to the next page then, uh, this is a breakdown of the project costs that Matt referred to. 25 and 26. Ninth Oak and Maple, 25, eighth, uh, more on Maple, Parking and Metal Lane in 26. And then we took, you guys broke those costs down for us into what of the work and engineering would be for streets, water and sewer. And so we come up with a total financing in 25 of a little bit over 2 million. Uh, and then in 26, potentially 1.6 million. So now, the reason we're going to show both of them today is. You know, everything's still up to what the board decides, of course, but I like to present stuff with the context of also looking forward. We have our existing situation. And if these are projects that are high on your list, I think it's good to plan for where things are going to go in the, in the future. But we do have it broken out so you can kind of see the impact of the first one and then the second one, uh, should the village decide to do all those, those projects. Okay? Okay, uh, the timing for the projects, as we talked, slated for 25 and 26. Right now, this projection does assume that we do separate borrowings, one in 25 and 26. The other approach that the board could consider is, and we do see a lot of communities doing this, is in, in order to reduce duplication at issuance costs and time and effort to issue debt, trying to combine a couple of years' worth of projects in a single year. Good side of that right now is, in a lot of cases, you can invest money you borrow at a higher rate than you're actually paying on the debt. So you can make money during that period of time. You're allowed to do it as long as you don't violate certain IRS rules on that, using tax exempt borrowing. The downside of it is, have you as a group decided to proceed with the project? You don't want to be borrowing for stuff that you're not actually going to move forward with. So those are the things you juggle before making a final decision. What we're going to show on the next couple of slides is assumes two separate financings, but we could have more discussions about ultimately what would be the best way for Baldwin to, to approach it. Okay? All right, so if you go to the next slide. This would be the new debt issue of just over 2 million to fund the capital street projects in, listed for 2025. We've used interest rates pretty conservative right now, half a percent above where the market is for it. The column in purple would be the annual principal and interest payment to pay this debt back over 20 years. About 155,000 a year, principal and interest payments in total. But if you go to the right of there, the payments again for budgeting purposes would be split to be paid back by three different funds. So the levy would be about 100,000 a year, water about 35, 36, and sewer on this projection in the low twenties each year. And again, that's from the idea that all three of those types of projects are occurring here. And the village is, in the past, you've charged the street portion to the levy, water portion to the water fund and the sewer portion to the sewer fund. Okay? Any, any questions on, on that? Okay, uh, one last thing I'd point on this, 20 years is the longest you can do for general obligation debt. Eric could be more of an expert on this than me, but I'm guessing typically what I see on street and utility projects is that's a reasonable, useful life. Uh, if we're doing some other things, maybe 20 years is too long, but I think for these types of projects, it's probably a, a reasonable fit.
Yeah, you'll be, you'll be patching up the streets before 20 years, but.
Yeah, you do some maintenance over that period of time.
Yeah, there's maintenance, but. Yep. Construction hopefully.
Yeah, yep.
Yep.
Okay, so if we go to the next slide, this is the same thing, but for the, the preliminary 2026 projects. That we had the budgets for. And again, it's a little bit less at about a million six, paid back over the 20 years with interest. And then again, broken out into the levy portion, which again is about 100,000, a little bit under 100,000 a year, and then water and sewer for their shares. Okay? Now, if you go to slide number eight, just spend a second on this. Uh, this would take the borrowing capacity upward. Uh, from about 11 and a half million where you are now. You can see the peak on this, uh, in the orange bar. 2026, 27 with the second issuance up to about 14.4 million, but you're still way, way below the state limit. The next slide, the one I think is the most important one though, and probably of, of the greatest interest to the board. What we did here is the blue bars are from that slide we talked about a couple of slides back with the existing debt levy that the village is already committed to. And then what you see here on top of that in red is the 2025 borrowing. This would be the levy component of that, not the sewer water component, just the levy component. And then, so you can see we go from a little bit below 600,000 a year to above 600,000 starting in 26. And then with the second borrowing, we go up to a, a little bit above seven, you know, 700,000, 725,000 when we'd have both issues stacked on. And that's the purple bars. Debt wise, right now with the current debt per a thousand dollars of value, probably paying taxes of about a dollar seven cents per thousand dollars of value. It would, with the, both issuance over a couple of years with no value growth in the village, so hopefully this is very conservative. We have it going up to about a dollar 38. So about a 30 cent increase per thousand dollars of value. So if you had a hundred thousand dollar home, 30 bucks, you know, you could do the math. That would be the impact of doing the two financings year over year from where you're currently at. And again, it's, I'm hoping it's a conservative estimate because we're using interest rates that are well above the market right now. And we're not assuming that the village has any new growth. And as we just talked about, your assessed value did go down, but I don't think, I don't think, uh, they're going to have, cut other property values again, that, you know, that was just pulling, I think mostly pulling that personal property out.
Yeah, next year it's going to go back.
I, I would think the trend would kind of go back to normal, right? Last, and this is very variable and su- subject to your decision process, but just to kind of give you a sense of, of the financing. If you were moving on the street projects and, and you're going through the bidding process and everything else and, and you were trying to hit. Uh, just as the thaw comes in, you know, you could start doing construction. That's usually in that April, May timeframe. So typically what we'll see, uh, leading up to that is the debt planning starting somewhere in the, the, well, we're starting it now, but we would start really actively moving forward with it. Somewhere in the February to March timeframe, taking bids on the financing, uh, somewhere into the late February to March timeframe. With dollars, uh, being available in the April to May timeframe, so those, as, uh, construction costs and others start, start to materialize. Mobilization in those costs, uh, the village would have the funds to start paying those invoices at that time. But that certainly can be moved to be a timeline that fits with whenever, uh, the, the village is ready to move ahead with the projects. And it works with what you guys are trying to do and other festivals you have going in the village, whatever makes the most sense. But I wanted to just give you a sense how long that takes the process so you'd have the, uh, cash in hand to start paying, paying invoices. And last thing, uh, I was going to mention, we always monitor this on the village's behalf, but we watch to see if any of the existing debt has interest rates a little bit higher than what we're seeing in the market. What we typically like to do is combine it with new money financing, if you're doing it, to blend it together if we can save some money. So we'll keep watching that. And if the decision is to move ahead with these projects, we'll report back to you about whether it makes sense to refund some of the existing debt, uh, at the same time. I don't know if there's anything else on the projects or, or from the committee on that, but. Uh, hopefully this gives you a sense of kind of the impact preliminarily of, of moving ahead with the street program over the next couple of years.
Do you have a rough estimate on if we were to combine the loans, like what the rough savings of fees would be and maybe the possible potential of interest saving or interest revenue based on these rates would be?
The borrowing on a 20-year issue right now, I, I think you'd be below 4%. And you could probably earn on investments right now, you know, government investments, so pretty secure stuff. Mid fours to 5% in that range, depending on how far out on the yield curve you go. So, you know, if you invest, invest in a million dollars and you're earning a couple percent, you know, it's in the thousands of dollars you're getting there. Uh, cost wise, you know, getting a rating is, on an issue about these size, probably about 12,000. So doing one instead of two is 12 instead of 24. Legal opinions, somewhere in that same range. Our costs, you know, somewhere in that same range, probably both of those are a little bit higher than the rating fee. But yeah, you're not duplicating those costs, so that's, that's the advantage. Again, the downside is how comfortable are you with the projects? If, if, if you are, feel, these are projects we're going to do. I'd say all things equal, you are probably better to combine them into a, a financing that carries projects over, over two years. If you're, if the committee and the board have said, like, yeah, we're moving forward.
Definitely do these two projects. We all wanted to do it one year, but. To answer your question, uh, Steve, I looked at, I think when we borrowed for the water towers and we got.
Yep.
Were we waiting on the clean water fund for so long? Cause we.
Yep.
Borrowed early, right? What do you call that? When you borrow early.
Oh, the interim financing?
Interim financing. I think we, I think Steve showed me, we earned like 50 some thousand dollars in interest by holding that for almost a year. Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
It sounds about right, right?
I, I think.
Before we got the clean water money?
Yeah, cause they're, they're, you know, the short-term interest rates went up a lot to fight inflation recently. And if you had locked into a, a good interest rate on your debt, there was a, a significant opportunity to earn. Earn some dollars in that. And we could run it, what, what I would recommend we do if we want to consider this is run some of those scenarios for those guys to give you exact numbers. What do you, what do you save on not doing two issues on, in terms of cost? And what do we think that interest earnings would be, uh, by doing the borrowing together and, and holding that doll, those dollars for a year to, to do the project next year? So we, we can run that scenario and give you guys a more concrete number to look at.
I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, how soon is the finance plan and the initial resolutions? How soon would they need to be adapted?
Well, if you're looking on this timeline, uh, if we're looking to try to move on that, Mark, I'd, I'd say we, we should be back, uh. February to talk with you guys again. Yeah, it's not, not.
Did you say?
Not next Wednesday, no, no. Let's, let's, let's.
Beat up our, beat up our shot dealing.
Well. I didn't, I didn't explicitly say this, but the other thing, that, this is for next year's budget. This, this stuff would not hit in 25. This is, would be the 26 budget when you'd have the, so, yeah. Yeah, so let's take care of this budget, get this one out of the way and then what the stuff will do afterward. Yep. Yep. Okay, well, we'll get you those projections on doing it together and, and see what the differences are, if that makes the most sense, cause.
And then we'll just put on for February's agenda, uh.
Yep.
That's, yeah, cause we'll get that all rolling here soon. Yeah, they won't start bidding until about February, I suppose, or March.
Yep.
The openings roughly.
Yeah, and we could time the, uh, financing to be right around the time you get those bids back to know. So if we feel like we need to do any adjusting in the, in the numbers, we could still do that. We could time that.
One other question for you, and I can't remember this. If we borrow, say we borrowed everything for the two years now, and the interest rate goes down, are we locked, are we locked in or does that fluctuate down or up?
Yeah.
At each month or year or whatever? How does that, so if like interest rates go down, is that our interest rate go down?
So the, the way it would work, if we do a, a 20-year issue and these, uh, just as referenced, Lance, these would be the same as the EMS building and the, the police facility. What we've been doing is, uh, taking bids on fixed interest rates for 20 years. So we get a, a firm bid that we present to the board to commit. The first, I think it was the first eight years of the 20 years, the village cannot repay or refinance into a lower interest rate. But starting in year eight through year 20, so about a 12-year period, you could either start making prepayments if you wanted to. Or if lower interest rates available, you could refinance it and lock into lower rates for the rest of the term of the debt. The trade-off is, you know, if you go to lenders and say, we want the ability to prepay at any time, there's a cost to that. Because they don't have a certainty of what return they're going to get. So it's trying to find, you know, what's that reasonable call to give you guys some flexibility if the market changes. But also try to get as good a rates as we can in the current environment. Yeah.
Awesome.
Okay. Sounds good. And, and Mark, uh, if we can be helpful on the stuff tomorrow, to let me know if, uh, try and say, package thing. I know we got the exhibit to you before, but if there's some stuff on the budget too, that, uh, on the debt side or any other side, we could be helpful, just.
Yeah, well, once we get the questions, we might reach out to you and we might reach out to the auditor too.
Sure. Okay. Perfect.
I got my speed dial, so whatever you need.
Yeah.
Dan Carlson.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. So do we have a motion approved 25, 26 and the engineer for 25? Yeah, cause I mean, and they can start, you know, we can start rolling on this to make a motion. Then we'll worry about the monies in February, you know, borrowing part. Then we'll worry about the monies in February, you know, borrowing part in February.
Oh, you're making a motion to approve the streets projects?
Yes. The street projects.
Motion to approve. Street projects as presented.
Yeah, we'll fill it in.
Yep.
Yeah.
Using 2025, using errors, engineering for street projects.
And 2026 will be a decision.
Is that represented?
Exactly.
We everybody lots of notice, so you know what street projects are doing.
Yeah. All right, you got a motion. You had a, all you seconded, right? We got a motion second.
Austin second.
Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Well, we can take kind of a short break here. Everyone else can go home.
So we have assessments with this project, I would assume. So we'll have to talk about that. Cause I would, we'll talk about the assessment role. Yeah, who's gonna do what?
They're being freshly updated, ordinance.
Yep.
By the way, by the way, thank you, Matt, for putting the way you set the, set this up because my nemesis on the ninth, he'll do this. He's coming here.
Rank him that pattern.
Yeah. Yeah, you don't own it. He doesn't own it here, but at least you're doing his project in front of his house, so I won't have to worry.
Well. I hope Dusty makes sure that they jackhammer.
From South.